My brother still just packs around with him, you know, that's all he said he ever wanted until the funeral. And he was talking to me about something, I was talking to Jerry, you know.
I'm, I'm pretty certain that each time I see him, he's gonna have.
Now they can.
He's gonna be mad because he's taking up too much space.
Prop City Council, we call the order Monday, January the twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. Call Row, please.
Barfield, Canada, Paul, Maguire, McManus, Short, and Taylor.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh my God, we come tonight thanking you for what you do for each one here. Dear heavenly Father, be with Mr. Mizell, dear heavenly Father, he's, he's sick again tonight. Guide and direct his life, dear heavenly Father. We know you are the great divine healer. We do understand, dear heavenly Father, that we have to accept thy will, not only be with Jerry, but be with one, dear heavenly Father, as a caregiver. Be with our nation, dear heavenly Father, through these transitional times, guide and direct our leaders. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States. Guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home to their families, in thy precious name. Amen. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the one nine seventeen meeting. Motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. McManus. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Citizen's request. We just got family in the audience, so yeah. Mayor's report, motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale or other disposed to personal property of the city Metropolis. That would be the old for, the old battery-opered forklift.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. McManus. Call Row, please.
The, um, I'm sorry, it's oh three. I don't know why I didn't say that though. Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to appoint Shane Lloyd to the police pension board. So, moved by Mr. McManus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Most of you probably know Shane, Shane's actually at Banter Bank. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure the, uh, the next item probably had you wondering just a little bit, uh, over the weekend, what the world could be an unexpected arrival.
I thought somebody had a baby.
You're close. Through, uh, you know, there's, uh, there's little things happen in the community all the time, but there's always reasons for everything that happens. Uh, last week, we actually had a firefighter that actually helped in the delivery of a baby, which was Mr. Michael Toddler. And in saying that, that goes to back to what we all strive to do up here in order for Michael to be in that position and have the ability, uh, to do something like that. Uh, it goes back to the credit of supervision and, uh, the guidance of the city council in preparing these firefighters and things of that nature for what they do. They do a very good job of it. And so, uh, we congratulate Michael for, uh, helping in that procedure, and I'm, I'm sure that young lady was very, very thankful also.
Yeah, right.
Another thing, you know, that brought a, that brought a new life into the world, and I'm, uh, I'm proud of our light department. Actually, at the same time, uh, as most of yous know, there was a lineman in, uh, Jackson Purchase Electric System that lost his life, uh, last week. So, uh, Stony, uh, being the, uh, leader that he is and the quality of man that he is, actually come to the office Friday and ask if, might've been Thursday, uh, ask if we had an issue with, uh, passing the hat envelope or what you wanna call it, uh, for contributions from the employees, uh, of the city Metropolis, uh, for that fallen lineman. And, um, the city employees actually took up four hundred and seven dollars, I believe. And Stony asked if we had an issue, or if I had an issue, if the men wanted to take a bucket truck and actually go to the funeral on Saturday. That was their time off and stuff like that, but I told Stony, uh, certainly, you know, that's the right thing to do. And, uh, I think Nathan Lott was actually the one who took the truck and, uh, actually went to the funeral and, and went with the procession to, uh, take that body, uh, to the cemetery. Uh, things like that, uh, in a small town and, uh, it says, it says something for our employees, you know, and, uh, like I said, it comes back to the leadership of, uh, of the man that's in charge there and, uh, Nathan for taking the time off of, that was his private time, but they felt like that was, uh, something that they needed to do and wanted to do, so I'm proud of that. Uh, next item on the agenda, corporate council report, Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I left in the office and I'll, I'll get it in your packets next time. Uh, this first item, um, I wanted to talk about, uh, you know, and see, what I put down there seems kind of disconnected. You got city utility writs on one hand, you got pension plan contributions on the other, and you think why, you know, how in the world is that related to each other? Because we think of those as separate departments, we think of that as separate entities and driven separately. Well, just like us, a lot of towns participate in what's called the downstate fire police pension funds. Those funds, those, while they're managed locally, they're held locally, the money stays here hopefully, um, the, the guidelines for police and fire pension are found in the pension code under articles three and four. They're set by the state, okay? The rules and regulations, if you will, of, of how, of how you're supposed to fund them, what level you're, you have to have funding at, um, how, when a person earns it, what they're paid out, all of that's set by the state. So, state law, state regulation governs that, but when we participate, and as we do, um, we have to come up with funds for it. State doesn't put any money in, it's the firefighters, the police officers themselves, and the employer, the municipality puts some money in. And every year, we do studies to determine, and you're gonna, you're gonna vote on this later, and by the way, I'm not, I'm, I don't want anybody to think because I'm laying this out, I think you're doing the right thing, what you're, what you're proposing to do tonight. But I also want you to understand how it's looked at statewide, so that when people come to you and suggest, well, do, you know, cut this for me or cut that for me, you just can't, okay? Um, and so, to get back to this, we have contributions we have to make, and this, to fund this thing, to fully fund these this year, is about eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, state law says you're gonna raise that with property taxes. Well, guess what? Property taxes amount to two hundred and forty-six thousand. Now, at one time, probably back when I first became city attorney, we were pretty close to covering that with taxes, but that liability keeps growing and growing and growing, and unfortunately, the taxes don't. And I'm not suggesting that we would ever wanna raise taxes that much, I'm just saying we don't have a tax rate that will support that liability. So, we have to find another source, and that gap keeps getting bigger and bigger. And so, as we sit here and we look out three years, four years, five years, six years, we know it's gonna keep getting bigger. Now, hopefully, if markets turn around, that'll help some, because this money stays invested, but we also have guys that are getting older and they're gonna retire, so we're gonna have more people drawing on this thing. And, uh, that increases your liability. My point in trying to connect these is, and I, and we never thought of this until recently, um, several towns came upon hard times, and, and we've been reading for the last five years or more about towns that are, that are, that are literally drowning in these pensions that they have, these contributions they have to make. And, uh, thankfully, we've not been one of them. We have some revenues, we're, we have been meeting this, we've been pulling it out of gaming and pulling it from elsewhere, but it's getting bigger, and it's gonna be this kinda thing we have to think about from a long-term standpoint. And so, um, one of, one town in particular, uh, and that was the one I, I was gonna drop the case with, or not the case, but a, there's a write-up on it that makes a lot of sense. Little, little, a village up north that for about four years wasn't able to make its minimum contribution. Now, the state tells you what the minimum is, okay? And, uh, we actually try to stay a little ahead of that because we have to get fully funded somewhere now, by two thousand and thirty, I think the deadline is now, we have to get fully funded. So, um, and we're, I think one fund is sixty-eight percent funded, the other one's seventy-something percent funded, so we, we're working that way, we're not there yet. So, anyway, uh, one town ran into this sort of hurdle, and there's some room in the law that says, well, declare a hardship, okay? And you just can't make that count. And yes, you can ask the state to have it considered a hardship, that you can't make that contribution. But the case that came up, this, this town made the, tried to make the case for a hardship, and they said, well, because of the recession, they had lost fifty percent of their revenue. Well, guess what? Because of the recession, we lost fifty-two percent of our gaming revenue. We'd lost sales tax revenue. They'd lost sales tax revenue. They actually had ma- managed to increase their sales tax rates, but lost overall revenue because business was down. Uh, they argued that they couldn't raise property taxes because they had PTail in place. Guess what? We have PTail in place. Uh, they argued that, uh, like I say, sales taxes dropped. Well, we've seen people attempt to raise sales taxes here, and it doesn't work, okay? And besides, even when they did, business fell off, so it didn't, didn't produce what they hoped to produce. And, uh, they really were at a loss, they actually went out and borrowed money to try to make these payments as best they could, but they got to where they couldn't borrow anymore. And we've seen other units of government struggle with borrowing money, and we don't want, we've never been one, and we don't wanna be one, but borrowing money to meet current expenses is not always a good thing. So, um, I point these things out because, uh, these folks claimed a hardship and the state said no. So, they took it to the appellate court, and the appellate court noted, among other things, that these folks had not raised their utility rates. In fact, one of them looked like it was even being subsidized a little. Uh, and they said, based on that, no, uh, you're not, you are not a hardship case. So, and I make that point because I don't think we normally, in our own minds, would connect utilities with pension fund over here. And I know a lot of our citizens wouldn't do that, and a lot of our citizens will put pressure on you all, hey, you need to drop, my, my electric's too high, or my water's too high, or my sewer's too high. Well, as the auditors pointed out the last time, you're in a position where you've got them paying for themselves, they are putting a little money back, but it's going right back into the system. They're paying for your repairs, they're paying for your maintenance rather than having to borrow. Well, you couldn't afford to justify it because you, you can't let this pension thing get bigger, you gotta have a source of revenue. And what the appellate courts are basically telling us is that, uh, this has to come first, this has to be a priority. And if you may have to make cuts elsewhere, you do. If you have to get revenues elsewhere, you do, but you have to make these payments. And so, um, I make that connection for you because I know, uh, most people don't, and I know given this time of year, and I know given, uh, it being an election year of all times, people will put pressure on you and try to urge you to say, well, yeah, I can cut utilities, this, I can cut. No, you can't get to a point where you're losing money on utilities because you've got to be able to have money to meet these pension plans and take care of everything else. I mean, you gotta maintain those utilities, you can't siphon off money elsewhere if it's gotta go to meet your pension contributions. So, it's just, uh, I don't think we've ever seen it connected in that manner before, uh, and now the courts have pretty well mandated. So, I, I, I wanted to, uh, ma- make you guys aware of it because I know you're the ones that get this kinda pressure, uh, but I, and I also wanted to, uh, know that this is something that we have to keep our eye sorta on, uh, it's that kinda thing that's out there that can, uh, can get away from us too, we have to make sure we're taking care of that. Um, the next thing I had, um, it's update on dangerous property, eight nineteen Pearl Street. Um, we, of all the houses, this is the house that's over next to where Clinton, uh, Clinton's property was. And, um, back, I, I've got to look at, I know I've been on this for a while. Well, um, we started with that house in two thousand and five, September two thousand and five, I wrote my first letter, and we call them dangerous, the, the state calls them dangerous and unsafe buildings, and that's how you pursue it from the mission. And between two thousand and five and two thousand and seven, I wrote at least four more letters. Now, we worked with the owner, Mr. Pulling, and eventually he got it where he had windows on it, he didn't have, he got his floors sealed up, he got his roof on it at the time, there weren't any holes in the roof, but then it just deteriorated again. It took two years to get to that point, it deteriorated again. I make that point because I think about, last time we were here, I'd given you a letter that I'd sent out to him, and it detailed what we went through last year. And I know last year, at the beginning of the year, uh, Mr. Mizell, who's not here, brought his house up, of course, he was chairman of the condemned buildings committee, and he brought that up and said, what are we gonna do about this house? Well, at the time, as I said in the letter, I made a call to Mr. Pulling, and he promised to do something within a couple of weeks, and then he didn't call back me, nothing happened. Mr. Cook sent him a letter in May, and, uh, his response was, he came in, saw the mayor and I, and again, promised to take care of it, asked if he could have it by the end of June. He didn't do anything. Uh, we went, all summer, he didn't do anything, I saw him on two separate occasions, he promised each time he was gonna do something. Well, once again, so that caused me to send the letter that you all had, and, and I even made him aware that we have a grant program that would reimburse him fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, his response was, he came in Friday and, uh, said that, uh, he had, uh, he had started to have some conversation with the church, with their own opposite corner. And, uh, I said, well, that's wonderful, but that's something that the mayor suggested to you last summer. And I said, do you have a, something down and right here? No, he didn't have anything right. We're just, just wanna let me know he's having a conversation, he thinks he can get something done. Um, he, uh, he was, uh, he didn't deny anything that was in the letter, he was critical of the letter, uh, because I misspelled Lanny Jones's name, uh, because I, that was who he had asked to use as a contractor, which we said, fine, we don't care, whoever you want to use. And, uh, uh, he was critical because I said he looked at me sheepishly when I saw him in a restaurant. Well, my opinion, he did, maybe he thinks he didn't, but nonetheless, I'm just laying out what took place. But he couldn't give me a timeframe, he couldn't give me anything other than this. Um, you know, I, we've tried to cooperate, um, I don't know what the church's position's gonna be over there, it's not really up to us to know that. Uh, I know that the church acquired another property on Eighth Street that needs to be torn down, and, and I assume, and we've sent them a letter, we've offered them the grant too, and I assume they'll probably wanna take advantage of that. Now, maybe they can do two properties, maybe they can do buyout something, I don't know, I, I really have no idea at this point. But, uh, I, you know, without some guidance or direction from you, I, I, and that's what I'm looking for, I need to know what you want me to do. You want me to wait thirty more days, you want me to, we did the title work, I mean, he's got clear title to it, um, he's been given multiple notices. I, I, I think the thing that bothers me is that last, last winter and last, uh, spring, uh, I mean, Mr. Mizell made some good points about getting these things cleaned up, but we didn't say we're taking a harder stance, we revised our ordinances, we did a whole lot of work. Uh, and one of the individuals that owns the property in that neighborhood, Mr. Hutchison, he came to the mayor, and he talked to him about, mayor, what can you do to help out this neighborhood? What can we get to this, take care of this junk? And, and Mr. Hutchinson always takes care of his property. He, he bought one of the lots that we had in that block, and he keeps it clean, and, and so, I kinda appreciate, I, and he's not the only one, we've had a couple of other property owners over the last year, ask, what can we get done, can we get something done? Well, we were, the city was able to, uh, work with the church and get the Riley property taken care of, and so, I guess I feel like maybe we owe them a little something, these folks are paying taxes and take care of property, but, uh, but I will, I will take direction, whatever the council instructs me to do.
Well, in that one section of block right there, and most of you know Mr. Hutchinson, you know, he takes good care of his own property, uh, always looks good, and the reason the subject even come up was he come, uh, to my office, uh, probably in, in, uh, the summer, maybe, maybe late spring, and it was, he and I got in my, my truck, and he took me over in that area, and he had two homes over there that he was, uh, he was kind of in dilemma. Uh, he let me leave, he, he had the ability to buy the properties, but he, he just told me, he said, I, I just can't invest more money and me invest thousands of dollars in a piece of property that I buy, and the house next door's falling down. He said, you know, it's just not a good, uh, decision on his part, but he, he assured me, he said, there's several places within that, it's kind of like a, you know, a full block area, I'm very interested in, but I can't do anything until, uh, the city pursues some of these other properties, and we've got other properties like that and stuff too, so.
So, Mr. Abel, I assume that, uh, that this has been going on for how many years?
Well, since oh five.
Oh five. Since oh five, that the city has been dealing with this man?
On and off, yes, sir.
I make a motion that we, uh, have the city attorney adopt a letter, tell him even unless he shows some significant actions within thirty days, we'll proceed with a court order to demo.
I'll say it.
There's no repair.
It's not, it was, it would cost more than it's worth. It'd cost more than it's worth.
I think you've been more than fair with the repair.
Yeah.
It's been a blade of yours.
So are they.
So, we do have a motion, we do have a second there. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, last thing, I'm just gonna hand this out, we get these from time to time, um, and if anybody ever wanted to do this, um, they start, every year, they, they hold some of these, um, if multiple people wanted to do it, I'll sign us up for it. Um, these are online webinars about electric utilities and running electric utility systems. Um, they've got one called Electric Utility One-on-One, a se- a section of those. They have five of them, and just about every spring they do this, ACPA does. They also got one on public power governance, that might not be bad either. You can take one, you can take any one, any of them you pick, or they're a hundred dollars roughly a piece, or if you take all five, they're four hundred dollars, three ninety-nine. Um, but I pass them out because they're gonna start next month, and typically, I think they last a, they're about an hour, hour and a half, if I remember right. Uh, they're not super long, uh, but if you guys would want them, if anybody would wanna learn a little more about our electric utility industry, governance, or even just the basics that, uh, we go through, uh, I know from being on the IBA, uh, man, we, unless you're in this stuff, it's hard to understand, and it takes years sometimes for you to get a handle on just what the, the basic terms mean and stuff, and, and, uh, so, if you let me know, we'll arrange it, uh, obviously, uh, for a hundred bucks, if multiple people wanna come to want, we'll have it up here, and I'll just put a computer screen up here and let y'all, uh, some, some stuff's probably more relevant than other things, but, but they tend to be personalized. What's that?
Provide that popcorn.
Yeah, I don't, I would put popcorn, we will. We would. But I'll have to do it because the mayor's too tired, but no, I can.
We don't put that.
We set up a GoFundMe account for, uh, uh, but, um, but, but we could, I don't mind, we'd run this through on, uh, our office budget, because, but, like I said, these are pretty inexpensive, but, uh, which, and, and I'll, it says from two to three thirty Eastern, so that would be, uh, one to two thirty.
Is always weekend.
I think they're, I think they're Thursdays or Fridays. Fridays, I believe. Yeah.
Oh, if you wanted it at eleven o'clock where I have to buy lunch or something.
It's at, it's at one to two thirty.
Hey, why don't have dinner then?
Uh, but if you, if you, we'll have another Waterline Street Committee or something before then, if somebody, if you guys think you might wanna do something or something, or you would, and like I said, you don't have to commit all of them, just kinda give me a clue, and I'll try to get them lined up. But, uh...
I'll try one of them, but like you said, most of them be, hopefully be talking over my head.
Well, believe me, I look at them still, after, after twelve years, a lot of them are still talking over my head.
Wait for the hand up.
But I'll try. That's all I have.
You know, going back to the, the, uh, impact of Mr. Abel was talking about pension funds and stuff like that, one thing that's good about that, and that's one thing that I've always been very proud of this council for. You know, we're not in one of those positions where that, uh, we're being eaten alive and having bad dreams over all this stuff, because this, the council's been strong enough that they do give diligence as they go along, they don't wait till you're behind eight ball and then it start. You know, if you all, have always been out above the, uh, grade and stuff like that, people don't understand these pension things, uh, one of these days, and if they don't keep up with it, they're gonna have a really rude awakening, so I'm happy to say that we're not in that, that little, that group, and there's, uh, we're, 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 we're way above the curve in that thing. I mean, there's some of these cities, it's in just, uh, you know, we're not gonna get out of it, so. Committee reports, Waterline Street, Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, Mayor, this is from our January the eighteenth meeting, and we have two items bringing forward the council. I'll make a motion to accept, pay application number five for the plant mechanical fence green replacement, you know, waste one treatment plant in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing for sale of other dispos- dispositions of personal property in, in the city of Metropolis, is this in the old bar screen?
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus? Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, finance, Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, Mayor, this is also from the January the eighteenth meeting, and I will make a motion to approve the extension agreement with Fick, McAdmire, and Williamson for the performance of the audit of two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen financial statements in the amount of forty thousand dollars per year.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Canada, discussion. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I motioned to approve the city's contribution in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars to fire action recommended by the actuary.
Moved by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Hall. I'm sorry, Short. Call Row, please.
Barfield?
Uh, no, I'm voting no against this because I think we should go with ninety percent, uh, fee on this according to our budget.
Canada?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus? Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, I will mo- make a motion, no, I'm sorry, we need a motion to approve the city's contribution in the amount of four hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred fifty dollars to place pension recommended by the actuary.
Moved by Mr. McManus. And second by Mr. Hall. Call the roll please.
Barfield?
No.
Canada?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Quick question, Rick.
Yeah.
What are they gonna do if they fall behind on this? Just get away with their departments and go to voluntary or whatever?
I don't know, cause see.
The media won't have no.
You won't have any, you won't have any employees making any contribution, yeah. That's the, that's the thing. This is made up, I mean, this is our part, but the employees got, and you'd still be, they'd still have to be paying. So, I honestly don't know. It's, uh...
They'd have to pay so much, but they wouldn't have to pay for future.
Well, you're right, you wouldn't, you, it's, it's, Jason and I had this conversation this afternoon, that it's, it's this darn it be you, darn it be done sort of thing down the road somewhere. It never, it never seems to end. Uh, what, the only thing that's gonna have to happen sooner or later is for new hires or new, uh, or maybe, you know, the state's looking to this. If you were hired, maybe you're, you're below a certain age or whatever, okay? Uh, your benefits are not gonna be as rich as the guys that came before. They're gonna have to modify that stat. But that's gonna take a lot of political will to get that done because, you know, every time that they've taken that up, there's always this group or that group that's obviously fighting. But the only way they'll ever get it turned around, it'll take years, is to probably change the benefits. Apply probably to most people that are working now, but it would, it'll have to apply for new hires. They're, and they may, and the other alternative is to raise the contribution level to, by employees, but you don't wanna raise that so much. I mean, I think they're appearing about nine percent right now, nine point nine. And so, I mean, it's gonna be tough to sell much higher. Uh, but we are staying on the same, like you said, we're sixty-eight percent and we move five point.
That will help now.
It will. Some of, some of their investments were, were in interest type products, insurance type products, and they've gotten slammed by the market the last few years because of lower interest rates.
That's what they've done with dollars and they put a little finger out here, but they had those there when you make the money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, well, if you just, you know, even with that kind of money, if you, if the economy gets better and every, you know, the way we all want it to, even a five percent increase, when you're talking about that kind of money, is gonna be taking a great load off the city of Metropolis.
So, I say, we can reach a hundred percent funding for cities to first get out. What, what's happened, uh, in a lot of these towns is they're at the point where the, the amount of money they're putting in that year is having to go all for payouts. I mean, there is nothing to...
There's nothing to build.
Our, our concern is that the interest on our funds is not enough to meet our payouts, okay? And so, we're, we're pouring more and more into principal so that we don't eat up that principal when we make these payouts.
But right now, contributions are still cutting the payout.
Is it? Okay, alright, that's good, that's good, cause we wanna, but that's the...
I started saying, that's where we're pushing for the hundred percent funding, cause five years down the road, you're gonna have about four more people on it.
Wow.
And that's when it's gonna get that up.
Yeah, it, uh...
Hopefully, in a co- the economy will come up enough that it bite you over six.
It's the same way in the fire department, if you look at theirs and theirs, it's the same way. You're gonna have some more people coming on with this, so your draw's gonna be bigger. So we, it, it is, it's a...
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Most of these things, well, they use, they use assumptions when they stay in those things. The seventy, seventy-two, something like that, and they're looking at, and that's, that's, I think they're gonna say change their balances. Good when we're drawing.
Mr. Barfield, your last item?
Yes, sir, I will make a motion to accept the audit financial statements for the fiscal year ending June the thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus, call the roll please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you, sir.
Bart and heads, Mr. Massey, sir.
Everything's fine in the end.
Mr. Morris?
We're here.
We're here.
We're happy to have you. Right?
I think at this time.
You always have, you have anything?
I always make sure you says nothing at this time, you're coming back.
Old business.
Did we fail to, uh, do the industrial committee on there?
Well, I haven't seen one. But I would do it, I'd be happy to do it if, 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 if we got one.
Something other about the approval of assignment with Misty Bell?
That was just to proceed, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was just a motion for him to proceed and bring it back.
Yeah, and I'm, and I didn't put it on cause I don't have it back from yet, Mr. Bar-.
We haven't got it.
You gave me some direction, I'm sorry. Well, you gave me some direction, oh, I'm sorry, you gave me some direction on what you want me to get in there and...
But there was a U-turn down there on that one section, so it didn't...
My apologies, but we don't have.
We don't have it back.
And I wanna make sure it's signed and all before I really bring it back to you, so we're fine, it'll be great.
Old business. New business. Miscellaneous reports.
Mayor, this is not a report, but talking about our deceased lineman, if you may recall, when during our recent ice storm, we had a lineman come down from Michigan and he was deceased the first night over to my crafting camp.
Yes.
And also, uh, I had a knee replacement in Nashville and I took my therapy there and in my group was a fine young man, probably six-four, looked like he could do the wrestler. He was missing an arm and a leg. He hit a line with all he threw and fortunately, he lived. But you should see this poor guy trying to work on a ball. So they, it is a dangerous, dangerous situation.
Well, you know, uh, and, uh, everything, uh, on the street department, even the water department, there's not anything in our public work, uh, that, that can't happen pretty damn quick. Uh, we had a conversation, I think I had a conversation with Harry a couple of, three weeks ago, we was talking about this equipment, that equipment. Had a, uh, pretty lengthy conversation with, uh, Jason today. Had a real long conversation and some direction last week with our electric department. And I go back to the same thing of this, uh, council and city gov, you know, we provide the best safety equipment that money can buy. But it's just as good as a guy used to. So, uh, and, you know, and I commend the, uh, supervisors and things like that. I mean, you could be run over by a backhoe just as easy as you would be electrocuted, but everybody has to do their job and, uh, and so forth, you know, we've, we've been fortunate. You know, we haven't, uh, had something like this, so you gotta commend the, uh, the city for, uh, providing the safety equipment that each and every employee needs. And then you have to commend the, uh, supervisors and, uh, thanks for making sure that those people are wearing it. So, uh, that's a good thing. We will have a, uh, need for a, uh, meeting on, unless something comes up before that. I put it back a little bit, we won't have another city council meeting until the thirteenth day of February. So, I was sticking a Waterlight and Street, uh, uh, and anything else that no, needs to be put in there on the eighth. Uh, I'm almost sure we'll have to have a Waterlight and Street for some kind of reason. Uh, industrial part of that may been taken care of, we did get a payment. So, uh, we may, we need to talk about anything else.
Is this gonna be at one o'clock?
It is one o'clock. I'm not moving either.
It is on Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Just help me by the way.
Last, last Wednesday, you know, you still, I only got so many hours in the day.
Yeah.
And we had, I talked to Rick the, the week before that, uh, he had a full schedule on Wednesday. I had a schedule and a half on Wednesday with no way to get it off. It was, it was a good day, but it was a really, really busy day. And I, when I changed that meeting from one o'clock to twelve o'clock.
You threw everything.
You never, you, you never anticipate the bad things. But actually, we had a local resident that passed away and fortunately, I'm not gonna say unfortunately, fortunately, I had the, uh, the honor to be a pallbearer at that funeral and it was an honor. I mean, it was something I, I wanted to do, but it sure messed up my twelve o'clock meeting, you know? And then we had another meeting, uh, in Baduka with, uh, I know it's part of you's, uh, saw it on the news and read it in the paper, on the tackle issues over there. That's a meeting that I, uh, I really need to be there. So, uh, I think we're just gonna stick that, unless it's just a life and death emergency, I think we're just gonna stick to the meetings, you know? Uh, but anyway, uh, we will have one.
Some people will show up.
Yeah, well, they got there last, you know, they got their road call.
I got their board adjournment.
We will have a Waterlight, don't know that we'll have to have an industrial, may, may have to, uh, may, maybe not. By then, uh, we probably have the water ordinance back, maybe?
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe, if not, it's no big deal on that. But we definitely probably will, if we don't have to have a Waterlight, if Doug and them don't come up with something, we won't have one. So, if we do, we do, and we don't, we won't, so.
Russell gets his.
We probably have one, yeah. We need it, you put it on there.
He tells me it's signed, but I haven't seen it.
Yes, sir.
I did forget one thing. If, uh, when you're talking to the people out in the community, especially our business owners, um, I put it on the Facebook page, but we've executed a couple of search warrants this week on these counterfeit, on counterfeit money. Um, have to keep an extra look. I mean, most of the stuff that's being passed doesn't really fall under the secret services definition of counterfeit money because it's motion pitcher money. The stuff that they use as props, and if you look at it, it says motion pitcher used only and not legal tender, but these clerks and stuff aren't, aren't paying that much attention. And, uh, we're, the, the community's getting nailed pretty good. We have one person locked up in jail right now, we're waiting for, uh, federal approval, we're trying to go federal on earth. And, uh, we identified two other people that are in the wind, but the stuff is still being passed because a lot of our, uh, drug users have, have been giving the money and they're, they're spreading it around. So, um, just a little, uh, due diligence.
I suggest we reach out to, uh, W M O K, Yellow Sheep.
I've, I've done it.
Put that and our good friends at the Planet, maybe, uh, we're able to put a little highlight, not only maybe, uh, uh, someplace where, uh, it can, uh, will get some attention and stuff like that, but it certainly, if you're, uh, if you're in business, uh, I promise you, and you're getting, uh, even forty or fifty dollars or sixty dollar worth of bad bogus bills, it's cutting into your profit line, so.
Yeah, I got mine for mine.
Channel three came down and did a, and also did an interview and stuff out of it, and they put it out last week, but I just don't think it would hurt for you guys also, uh, when you're, when you're visiting the establishment and stuff, just don't mind them.
Chuck said if they put your picture on, they wouldn't take it.
Well, that's true, that's why they're smart, they're not using it. I tried to put it for the charger.
He said that quiet, but I...
Little ones wouldn't take it for the charger or something.
Alright. Next item, financial report, payment of salaries, payroll and contract bills. Moved by Mr. McManus?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Call the roll please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus? Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills, I'll move on.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Hall, call the roll please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did have correspondence today with the, uh, uh, electronic salvage, uh, recycle, or what we choose to call it. We're looking tentatively, maybe, uh, we had two dates. Uh, right now, it looks like it may be the first Saturday of March. We wanted to make sure we got the Christmas season over with, get the Super Bowl season over with, and then we'll go from there. We did have correspondence by email back and forth today. That's not set in stone, but, uh, the preliminary was on the first and it will be from the hours of like eight to three. So, that'll give everybody ample time. It will be for the city of Metropolis residents, uh, but that's gonna help a lot. Anything else for the good of the cause that anybody has?
And we heard back from, uh, air, uh, repayment plans from the, on the two lead.
No, I don't look for that to happen for another month, please.
Whatever the last date is, is what I look for that to come in, if you want to know.
Real close.
The sixty days.
Sixty days from the fifteenth of December, whatever that is, okay, that's what I, I look for.
That's February the fifteenth.
I don't believe it'll be this month, Valentine's Day.
Yeah. Right there.
Yeah, it'll be the last.
It'll be in a big Valentine.
But we haven't heard.
No, yeah, anyway.
Well, we got the one check, that's all.
We have, we have.
Yeah, we got the, yeah, we got a fifty thousand dollar check.
And it didn't clear.
And it did, we need cash.
But I look for it to be the very last day. And everything's been signed, sealed, recorded and all that.
So, they paid that fifty thousand all through.
Yeah. Yeah, it was.
So, y'all have got nothing to find a sign.
Oh, yeah, and it's all reported. It's all, yeah, we're in place, we're in place.
Two hundred thousand dollar check.
Yeah, we're in place. So, uh, if nobody else has anything for the good of the cause, we need a motion to adjourn.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Maguire?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.